Good afternoon and welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, October the 23rd, 2023. The time is now 3:00 PM. The work session of the City Council will now come to order. We have a few items to discuss today. First item is interviews with applicants for boards and commissions. I am a Library Advisory Board, Laura Begoff-Bores. Item two is Arts and Culture Advisory Commission, Richard Alfred. And item three, Housing Authority Board, K. Williams. And then item two is the Trinidad Golf Association Operation of Golf Course Study. Item three is the NOAA's Arc Update. And item four is the Co-Responders Program. So we'll start off with the interviews. And item one is 180 Library Advisory Board. Ms. Laura, are you here?
I am.
Please come forward.
Hello.
Okay, first of all, give us your name and then what we'll do is explain to us why you want to be on.
Okay.
And then we'll ask questions.
Perfect. So my name is Laura Begoff-Bores. Do you want to go right in or? This is a brand new process for me. So my interest in the library board is to really just continue in my support of the local community. I know a few of you. I owned Kitty Corner, which is a large childcare center in Trinidad for 10 years. And then I ran early intervention for both Work for NOAA and Los Angeles County for three years. And then after that, I started out with South Central Head Start. I still work for Head Start, however, I'm working for an organization out of Denver, so I do work from home. I'm no longer having to travel as much as I did before. But what that has done is basically taken me away from our community's children because that early Head Start only services as south as Pueblo, Colorado. So I just kind of want to get back into the throes of being able to help our children. I have a early childhood degree. I have a psychology degree. I just really would love to be in the forefront of being able to help maybe with the children's library and really take it to a different place. Disabilities and mental health is really very much my forte and my specialty. So I'd really love to see how we could turn that children's library into something that could really be inclusive of our community's most neediest of children. Also possibly bringing some of those really amazing programs that everybody talks about up north into our own area for our, to support our little ones.
Do you have any questions for councilors?
Just thank you, Laura, for stepping forward. I know we've got some interviews at the radio station in the past and your concerted effort into being an integral part of the Library Advisory Board, I think, is essential. I think you're well-suited for that. You know, you did the autism organization 24 years plus at the Early Childhood and Head Start, so thank you.
Thank you.
Have you been to a library? Have you volunteered?
I have not been able to volunteer, but when I ran early intervention, that was a huge part of how I was able to reach our community and get the information out there. I know the children's area is amazing. It's an amazing support for the community, especially as we have these little ones coming through. We have a lot of children that are unable to find a daily setting, whether it be childcare or preschool. So I think that really helps to come in and support the local community. So I would love to see it expand in ways that maybe we hadn't quite thought of.
Have you met the library?
Yes, and then her mind, her, I'm a little bit under pressure, so her, her name escapes me. But yes, every time I see her, I know her by face and we're always very good with each other.
Have you gone to any board meetings at the library board?
No, I have not. My, my, and so this will be my first, like, introduction into local community government. I did serve on a board for Walsenburg because I was also early intervention for Merfino. My time was very short in the past. I was busy pursuing a degree in psychology and then my time with Head Start had me traveling to Sanford, Almosa, Pueblo several times a week. But now I work from home, so I'm kind of like, what do I do with all this time? And now I'm done with school, so I have my degree. So just to be able to spend time, really, I have a more flexible schedule. I do still have a son at home. He's 12 and he has autism. So that has really been where my drive and my heart has been.
I really, I really strongly suggest that you go to a board meeting to see if it's something that you think not as a, it really is a requirement, isn't it? That the, you go to at least one board meeting.
Oh, that's a very required document. I've been on this discussion on it.
It was, and then we changed the process.
Process, yeah.
Okay.
Because that's when the boards were getting their own members.
Oh, okay.
So I was back in.
So we didn't, we didn't keep that requirement. I really strongly suggest you do it though for your own, for your own benefit.
No, and I mean, and I'm not necessarily familiar with, like, city of Trinidad stuff. I have been to the courthouse with the county boards and stuff, just in speaking about early intervention. And then I was primarily a part of government in Merfino County as a volunteer and also as a support when I was part of that program that was helping with funding of some of the local youth programs up there. It's now a defunct program. So I am familiar with how it runs. I'm just not necessarily privy to specific information for our area.
I have no, no other questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
I don't intend to answer the questions, but yeah, it's, it's good that you want to put in for that. It's nice to see that some enthusiasm. So I think if you check the meeting out and see the board members find out what's going on, you might, I think you'd be a good asset.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Laura, thank you so much for your interest in helping with that. And I likewise appreciate your passion and enthusiasm, especially when it's geared towards the youth and most especially the special needs area of the youth. That's important that they have support. And it sounds like you have a wealth of knowledge and experience to bring to that. When, when you're part of a board and you have a big agenda and it's not necessarily the direction or the intention of that organization to focus on that, have you had experience with sort of compelling people to, to, to follow your ideas? Can you talk a little bit about that experience and what you mean?
Absolutely. I think that in me working with early intervention, that's always a difficult conversation, right? Those referrals come from all different sources. And sometimes families don't always align with that line of thinking to really becoming more of a salesperson, as you will, so that you can show them the benefits of why this is something that we would like to do. Forgoing in my just experience with Head Start, so when I worked for Head Start, I didn't just work for the local Head Start. I was a Disabilities Mental Health Manager, so I was in line with helping 180 staff understand the benefits and why we want to work through certain things and in certain ways in favor of children. Now with my current position, I'm also Disabilities Mental Health Management. But now I've expanded to six counties and 45 sites as far as Mesa and Garfield Counties, Adams, Arapahoe, Morgan, and as well as Pueblo. And so I have had a great deal of experience in dealing with several different personalities, several different, you know, thought processes. I think it's important to remain curious. I think rather than telling people what they need to do or how they need to do it, just really asking questions and seeking to understand a different perspective. That's where that psychology degree really helps me to be able to learn how to speak to people. I think early in my career, when I owned Kitty Corner, some people knew a very different side of me. That's been seven years past. I think anybody that has met me more recently has seen such a stark change in how I navigate scenarios. You know, just, it, it's, it's better to, it was one thing that was said to me when I worked at Head Start by one of my bosses and it was like, Laura, do they want, do you want them to hear you or do you want them to listen to you? And that was very encouraging for me because it really helped me to understand that I can definitely help people and lead them, but I can't do it for them. So yeah, definitely part of my job is being a salesperson because disabilities and mental health, when you're talking in terms of little ones, is a very hard pill to swallow.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for your interest in doing it. I, I don't have any further questions.
Laura, your, your background is very impressive and I want to thank you for applying. I know that the current librarian, you know, she's done a lot of different programs out there. I'm not sure if you have read some of the programs that she has installed or is working on. Is there any particular type of program? Can you give us one idea of what you, you feel would be necessary? Because we know there's, like I said, the disabilities, but then there's the other kids as well.
Of course.
What would, the biggest, what kind of benefit from a program that you would bring forward?
Working through and with several nonprofits, I have a bird's eye view into a lot of free programming that is available and mostly taken part in by areas up north because they're very privy to it. I personally am trained in a lot of different mental health capacities that can serve all children, every child. One of those is conscious discipline. It's a positive form of discipline that I think any parent could definitely learn from, master and help. I mean, honestly, it's even techniques that you can, that help you with your spouse. Helps you with your, you know, your fellow colleagues and stuff. It's just really taking things and seeking to understand somebody else, somebody else's perspective. But while you're doing that, building community. And I think that if we work towards teaching our little ones and even our older children how to form connection and build community, we might not have as many problems as we have now. I've seen a lot of the great things that they're bringing through, but mental health is really something that should be a focus for everybody. There's definitely a stigma around that, but we cannot get away from what goes on in our head.
From your, from your degrees, what is your major discipline?
My major discipline is early childhood and then my psychology degree is clinical counseling. But I would not be able to be a counselor unless I got my master's degree, which is something that I have chosen not to do. Yeah.
Any other questions? I understand. Thank you for.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I just want to say, I'm impressed with your qualifications and I just want you to know that I appreciate your desire to use your education experience to better our kids.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person that we have for the Arts and Cultures Advisory Commission, Mr. Alfred.
Hello. Hello. Oh, I retired seven years ago and moved here after a career as a college professor. And we've been, my wife and I have been trying to contribute to this town and make it a better place. Who's going to call? Questions? Yes. I was on the Arts and Cultural Advisory Board before. I was on there for three years. I was chair for two years. I oversaw the purchase and placement of Hans Drew's horse. I oversaw the purchase and placement of Tom Lutick's marble monument across from the tire shop. I am also a founding member of the Art Council. I founded that with some other people seven years ago. We're a small nonprofit. We put on the youth art show every year in, in the spring, in May. And then we put on the Make Art Fair every June, one of a kind event, no, nowhere else other than right here in Trinidad. And then we just started doing the senior art show at the nursing home as well. And so that's something we plan to do each year going on into the future. We also sponsor First Friday Art Walks. That's us. We do the sponsorship. We hire the bands. We pay the money for the music. That's something we do. I'm also partners in a local gallery, Marketplace Gallery, if any of you know that gallery. And with my wife, we also teach a class in stained glass out of the community college. One that starts tonight. If anybody, there's one spot left. We start, we do that every twice a year.
Questions?
Oh yeah, very nice resume and your proficiency in the arts is very exquisite. Mr. Alfred, if you're appointed to the board, would you like to implement or initiate any new programs to the Arts and Culture?
I've already been meeting with them through the last two meetings, although I'm not an official member. But they said, come and meet with us. We've already started a list of local artists, so when we have RFP, Request for Proposals, we have a list of local artists that we can send them to first. And I've already started accumulating that. I've also begun to redo the mural under the Commerce, Commercial Street Bridge. If you know that's a mural, it's been there for quite a while. It's been damaged. I've already started to do the repairs on that. But right now, I was told that we have a relatively stagnant budget for next year. So we can't plan anything too enormous. We've got to stick with that budget.
Well, thank you for doing this.
I'm very budget conscious. I hate wasting money.
Numbers person.
Yes.
I don't think you have enough enthusiasm. You hope I'm just kidding. You said words that just tickle in my little ears. Budget conscious.
And you always put, allow us to put flyers up in your window of your business for all of our events for seven years, going on seven years.
I mean, your qualifications and your enthusiasm is over and above. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Karen here. It's great to have someone, like, your experience to come out there and work with the programs and stuff. So good luck and I hope that we can get more things going with you and work some more of your ideas. Sounds great.
Ms. Oboltry, do you have any questions for Mr. Alfred?
Thank you, Mr. Alfred. You have experience with the Arts and Culture Commission already and you are also currently on the Creative District Board. And I'm just wondering if you have any insights as to the differences between those two boards or whether or not they could be more complimentary serving the arts community?
I'm just getting to know the Creative District Board and I'm not really that aware of what they do. I've only been to two of those meetings so far. But I do think that being part of all these different arts boards and able to help communication between them and see where we're able to help each other.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all.
I have real questions, but I certainly appreciate your enthusiasm and I look forward to your contributions. Also, I really appreciate the horse.
Oh, yes. I'm glad we've got it.
A great piece for Trinidad.
Yes. Incidentally, on the horse, we couldn't get CDOT to respond to our request for approval for that. And months went on and, and I've got a friend, he said, I've got a sister who works for CDOT. One quick call to her and we got approval within a week.
Connections.
Yes.
Connections.
We didn't remember.
I never let me.
We need that sometimes. So anyway, I was going to say, thank you for applying and it's good to see that you're three years of experience, prior experience on the court and it's glad to see you wanting to get back into the groove of things. The one question that I have is, and I'm not, I've heard this, how accurate it is or not, but I understand that there are other arts organizations in town. And if that's true, I don't understand why we have, you know, one, two, or, I mean, two or three of them. I don't know. Do you know?
We don't, the one that people are familiar with, that used to be called the Trinidad Art Council, is disbanded. It disbanded seven years ago, went bankrupt. There was a deadline going on. And so we are fresh. Our group, I said, let's choose a name more different than that name. But they overruled me, so we have a name that's similar. No, we just have one private nonprofit.
But it's good to hear because I hadn't heard that there were two, maybe three, and that there were.
Just the one.
How, bringing it together under one because, you know, one organization can be better than two or three.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred.
Item C, Housing Authority Board, K. Ms. Williams.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good. Tell us a little bit.
So this board position opened up with the Housing Authority and housing is something I know really, really well. I've done about a half billion dollars of development. So I've either been involved in firms that have done that development or I've done it myself. And the reason I've done so much of it is because I was in New Orleans after Hurricane Katrina. And so I have, that kind of catapulted me into a entire career of housing, fixing things up, doing smart properties, working with federal government, working with state government, working with local government. Housing Authority there, I've worked with them for a long time. So as you know, I've been getting involved with a lot of things Trinidad lately. But in particular, this one, I think, could be almost the best fit for me in my experience.
Any questions?
I really don't have a question, but thank you for your interest in this.
Have you gone to any Housing Authority meetings or have you talked to the director or?
I've talked to the director and I went, that was one of the reasons I was inspired to, to go for it because I felt like what she was trying to do and some of the ways she's moving forward with the board, I really aligned with a lot. So I, I'm hoping that if I was, if I was able to serve, I'd be able to help those efforts.
Such as giving advice?
Well, I know that the, with the board is, is pretty strong. We've got Detective Lay and a couple other folks on there. But you don't necessarily have somebody who's an architect or in the building industry or in the housing industry at all. So I just, I guess I would just help to support and then rely on my experience to be able to fill in however I could. And so, you know, there might be a couple of different things going on. It could be incentives. It could be developments that Housing Authority is looking to do. It could be property management improvements. All of those things I think I would be a good candidate for.
You understand that that position on that board is highly regulated. But my husband was on there for 30-plus years and it was less about architecture and planning than it was following the rules and regulations that the federal government brings down to you. So as long as you understand that.
I've worked with the GSA. I've worked with all divisions of federal government. So I'm pretty comfortable with those regulations, following them and being accountable to them.
Okay, thank you.
The only question I have is, you have down, you only could commit four hours a month? That seems like.
I don't know. I don't know what the.
Yeah, that's what I needed.
I, I think it, I think it's as much as needed. I can commit, I can commit to more.
No, I was just kind of curious because I only have.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure exactly what to put or what the need would be. I think there's probably things that the director wanted me to be involved in. I could commit more, but I'm flexible.
Ms. Oboltry?
Hi, thank you. Ms. Williams, there's a list of questions that the director sent us that she would like to see incorporated in board interviews for this position. So I thought one of them was interesting because I don't really know what the answer would be, but I wonder what you would think the answer to? How will you balance the needs of our employees, tenants and stakeholders?
Balance the needs of it? Well, first of all, what I want to do first and foremost is support the executive director. That would be number one. And then making, being able to make good decisions, I think part of that is, is listening to what the needs are. And you don't really know what those needs are and how to support them unless you're listening. So paying attention and being, you know, somebody who's available is, I think, important to me. And then going forward, organization is always important if you're balancing a large organization that has stakeholders, the community and, and employees. So there's a lot of different things to balance and having a good organization is the backbone of that. Having good systems and streamlining things, that sort of thing, keeping good records.
Another question that I liked that I thought was a good question is, okay, what would you do if one of our decisions, being the board's decision, was unpopular among the staff?
If the Housing Authority Board's decision was unpopular amongst the staff?
Right.
I think that communication's key. So I think that you start having those conversations and, and see where everybody's at. See where both sides are at and, and negotiate and see, see what, see what, how you can meet in the middle if possible. Or, or at least gain some sort of understanding.
What if it required you to, to support the executive director even if you didn't agree with that decision personally?
Like I said before, the, the executive director, from what I know about her and her abilities and her goals, I, I feel like it would be an easy decision for me to support the executive director in that, in that most cases.
Okay.
That's not.
Thank you so much.
Oh, sorry.
What would you do if you differed from?
If I differed from the executive director? I would support the executive director. And the reason would be because of alignment and.
Okay, that's what I understood you saying, but thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate you applying. I have, I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
You know, I know you have your other items in the fire and stuff. How will you balance things moving forward?
Yeah, so again, it's about organization. For me, I've got lots of, I have lots of businesses that I run right now. I have probably eight active. And then I'm also very involved in the community. So for me, it's all about organization, delegating, good, good organizational practices, things like that. But I make myself very available to most people. I'm no stranger to giving out my phone number or calling people back as soon as I can. So I think, I think, I don't think it would be challenging for me to balance all of it.
You mentioned that you're on the Housing Authority, I guess, in.
I worked with them.
You work in what, what capacity?
We worked, we worked with them on a couple of housing developments that were mixed income and low income developments. And again, that was after Hurricane Katrina, so it was sort of like disaster recovery type things. And that paperwork was mountainous. And so I learned a lot during that time about how to deal with regulations and make those types of decisions and advocate for, for local folks when they need be and then, you know, have that relationship with the government.
That's one of the things that, you know, the Housing Authority is, doubt all the time is government regulations.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how many units actually operate here in Trinidad.
I think it's 196.
And it does take, you know, a lot of, I'm not sure how involved board members get in that, in that arena. I really don't know. That was something that would be learned, of course.
Yeah, yeah, of course. And I would just love to offer my experience with that or my resources to that. And like I said, the, the executive director's in the driver's seat. I would just want to be a support for her.
Exactly. The only concern I had was, you know, when you put down, you only had four hours to commit. And now that was my concern. But you said you have multiple businesses that you deal with.
Mm-hmm.
You've been able to take care of all your businesses plus probably the housing board and anything else.
Yeah, and anything else. Almost on the process of being a board and the treasurer of that too. So I've been somewhat selective in terms of what I get involved in, but like I said, the housing, I think, is like amongst the best fit for me.
Yeah, sometimes you get too many boards. It's hard to.
Yeah. I'm definitely not looking to be on all the boards, but I, I definitely like this one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, Trinidad Golf Association Operation of Golf Course and its Study. Mr. Ruda, what do you have?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and introduce this. We invited members of the golf association today. I had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago. They wanted the opportunity to speak to you about the presentation of the study that Mr. John Waite did last month and give you some feedback from their perspective. And then today would be a great opportunity for us to have a conversation about moving forward and what the council would like to do from here.
Okay, who is, is that?
I've got compatriots, but I think I could, they can fill in what I miss out.
Are you part of the board?
Yes, I'm a member of the board. The president would be here, but his wife died suddenly and unexpectedly not last week. And so I'm taking his role to present our case. I'm sure you all know about the history of the golf course, I don't want to bore you. Built in 1915, one of the earliest courses in the state. It's often voted one of the top 10 nine-hole courses in the state. It's got a reputation. It's got a historic clubhouse designed by Isaac Graff, now in the Registry of Historic Places. Now, the issue at hand is signing an extension of the lease between the Trinidad Golf Association and the city of Trinidad. Last April, we received a letter from the city that our lease with the city would expire at the end of September. That happened. It's over. We have no legal relationship right at the moment. So all we wonder is what order do we go from here? Now, the Trinidad Golf Association is a nonprofit which has been taking care of our golf course for over 70 years. This partnership between the city of Trinidad and the TGA is that old. Our board of directors has a position for a member of the city council. No one has held that position for four years. Before that, we often had a member of the city council sit in, know all about what was happening with the golf association. Now, our membership, we were at the meeting when we had the consultant come. We were all here for those two hours. And so we had a meeting after that presentation and about 45 of our members attended. And this was in early October and we discussed the situation, what to do. And we have not been given access to this report. It was contracted to be completed within two months. Five months later, it has. Five months later, it has not been given to you. Five months later, it's not available to us or to you. I'm not sure about the credibility of that man. Now, we sat here for those entire two hours, just as you did. We, I heard everything you did. Many, many members of the TGA attended that session and the consultant was given nearly two hours of the council's time. We were given no opportunity to respond, not even half a moment, half a minute. The council at that meeting voted to consider in the future a feasibility study by the same gentleman about the future of the course. We were told later that would be at a cost of about $50,000, all before hearing even one word from the TGA, your seventy-year partners. Clearly, we are aware, the city does not have confidence in us to manage the course well. We don't have to read between the lines that carefully to understand that the city thinks it can do better. I understand that. Now, the former TGA president, Brett Plant, pointed out at our meeting that like all seasonal businesses, the golf course runs at a loss during the winter months, from six to $7,000 during the winter. We don't have green fees coming in, but we still have all the expenses. So almost none of money comes into November and December. We get some money flowing in January and February when new members get their membership, renew their members. So we do have a source of funds then, but if we don't have a lease to the golf course, we cannot ask for members to pay for memberships. We can't offer that. We have no legal right to do that. So without a lease, we can't have any source of revenue until at least April. So what the city apparently would like us to do is to take care of the course, go into about a $6,000 debt each month, only sometime next spring to have the course seized from our control and given to someone else when profit-making becomes possible. Our members said that this is not a satisfactory situation. So we discussed the recommendations and complaints made by the consultant. And we talked about shortcomings. So you were all here for those two hours, just like I was. He said there are players, golfers playing without paying. That doesn't occasionally occur. I'm one of those early morning players. Everyone I ever play with always pays. We care about that course. We don't want it to fail. We pay. Are there people who sometimes don't pay? I'm sure there are. There are. Why don't we have staff starting at seven in the morning? We'd have to have two full sets of clubhouse staff. It would double our cost if we did that. And so we know we lose a little business by having just a single person manage the clubhouse through the day, but that's the alternative to having two full-time people. Now, we acknowledge that the fees for playing aren't probably too low. Last year, we raised the membership fees. We know that our cart fees are probably too low. We're ready to raise those too. We lack pro shop merchandise. We agree. We don't have much of that. We lack a pro for-profit driving range. As Brett has pointed out, we tried that and people kept stealing the balls. They weren't able to make any money on it. So almost everything this consultant suggested has been tried, often tried more than once over this seventy year period. So, but a number of the consultant's complaints left us scratching our heads. He called the layout uninteresting. If any of you know any golfer, ask them what their opinion is. They'll tell you it's one of the most interesting layouts that you're going to find. It's a wonderful course, not only seeming, but really wonderful to play and very challenging. He said we would have more play for women if the women's yardage wasn't so long. He quoted the women's yardage as 7,000 yards. It's 5,400 yards. I don't know where he came up with that. Somehow, he didn't even look at our store card to see the actual yardage for women. He says carts were not rented on July 4th. Our clubhouse manager, Jeff Monarco, could produce your sheets. So, you know, we had many rentals of carts that morning. It just wasn't true. I don't know where he came up with it, but it wasn't true. He said we had forty-four new memberships and new memberships, we give them a break and we charge them less. We had seventeen. I don't know where he came up with the forty-four. His report was filled with so many inaccuracies, we just questioned his credibility. We also believe that he just doesn't understand a small-town operation where you often trust people to pay their, their dues even if you don't have someone watching them. Now, the consensus was formed within the TGA that we should ask the city for a longer lease and a chance to improve. The city, number one, the city is not ready to take over the operation of the course. You clearly do not yet have a plan. That's why you considered consideration of a feasibility study for $50,000. You don't yet know what you want to do. I understand that. But in the meantime, you need us. We have the knowledge and the desire. Our greenskeeping staff have over sixty years of experience. Some of you know Guido, forty-four years on the job, same job. You can't just hire guys who mow lawns to take care of a golf course. There's a lot to it. And the top two greenskeepers have training in this. They have degrees in this. Out of our full-time greenskeeper staff, only Warren earns more than a dollar above minimum wage. We don't have anyone making big money in this show. All, all the salaries are low. Even Guido hasn't received a raise in fourteen years. The clubhouse staff, they work for just above minimum wage, about a dollar above minimum wage. And then what you get today is you get a whole bunch of ordinary, those who all work, work free. All of us are unpaid. Why do we do it? Because we love the course. We want to consider, we want to see it succeed. So what we would like or requesting from you is a one-year lease and through, even better, at least through 2024. We are aware that you think you may be able to find better management for the course. And if after a year, if you can't find better, if you can't, we say go for it. Go for it. But we believe that we can show you in this year that our partnership is worth maintaining. Seventy-year partnership of friends and neighbors. Now, we're not just saying, please give us another lease. We're saying we can do better and here's how. I've been asking everybody I know what they think of the golf course. They have lots of complaints. First complaint is food. They all say, we need to have food out there. Well, we've been trying to do food and having trouble doing it, but we're willing to try it again. We're willing to make it happen. Some kind of a food establishment at the golf course. It might be a little simple at the start, get more complex overall, but we're ready to give it a try. Number sixteen hole, everybody thinks it's unfair. We need to cut down turn trees. We'll get that done in the first week. The consultant would like to have two people operating the clubhouse. We could do that, but it would be an additional full-time person. It'd be hard to finance. But we could give it a try. He said we could operate a full for-profit driving range. We've tried that before. We're willing to try it again. We could try it again. He said you could buy a simulator for golf practice, which is a moneymaker at some courses. We're willing to try that. We'd be glad to try that. He suggested we raise membership fees. We're willing to do that again, two years in a row. Cart storage fees, we're willing to do that. Cart use fees, we're willing to do that. We're willing to try it hard to bring in more revenue. Right now, we do almost no marketing. We have a Facebook, we have a, a website. That's about it. We're willing to try marketing. We're willing to make a new billboard. We're willing to go on Facebook, use social media, really do all the tools of social networking to market the course. We're also willing to put up new signs to help people locate the course. So we want to work with the city to make the golf course better. We want to earn the city's trust. In return, we've got a couple of things we'd like a little help from. The Siberian elms, which are planted along the course, were planted in 1915. They're reaching their life expectancy. We probably have fifty dead trees. And we know that the city has the equipment and the staff that they could help us do that. I'm willing to contribute my labor if, if the city's willing. We, it's been four years since our fairway has been fertilized. We need a little help financing that. Some of the equipment is nearing the end of its useful life. We, we might need a little help with that. And finally, we'd like a member of the board, of city council to be on our board so they know what's happening with the course. Now, all power is in your hands. You have the power to say, no, if you want, we can bring in the keys to the golf course tomorrow morning and it can be yours to operate. But I think we can prove to you that we can do a better job and make our partnership one that you're glad to participate in.
Questions?
Well, I've admired this golf course for decades since I was a kid and good people are keeping it going. And Guido's a master at course maintenance. Okay, one-year lease extension. I would like the association to submit a one-year retrofitted detailed outline moving forward, a strategic plan and pretty much in, in detail to see how they can maybe communicate with the city and, and work something out. If a strategic plan is not put in place, then maybe dissolution of the golf association. I don't know.
We'd be glad to submit such a plan.
Something's gone awry here real badly because it's not an us against the golf association. And let me explain a couple of things if you don't mind. Okay. So the golf course is an asset that the city of Trinidad owns. Do you agree on that?
You bet.
All right. So what happened a couple of years ago at Monument Lake? Same situation, wonderful asset, but it wasn't, it wasn't working to its potential. Okay. We got, we found somebody to come in that is a professional. The, if, nothing has changed but the management. Now, I'm not saying the golf association shouldn't be managing that course. What I am saying is the city found value in hiring a professional consultant to come in here and do a professional job. So there is, I don't know where this is, has gotten to this point, but that was never my intention. And I don't believe it was council's intention.
And we have heard informally that, just what you said, that the city was very impressed with what has happened in Monument Lake.
Absolutely.
Members of our group has, have said, the key difference there is the man who took it over invested over a million dollars of his own money in that project.
Absolutely.
There is no such person for the golf course.
No, but what I'm telling you, I'm telling you is we have to get a, give it a shot. We have to go through, in my opinion, to go through and see what needs to be done. It's not to say the golf association isn't, and I'm not talking about millions of dollars. I, I told you that day that it's champagne taste and beer money. I mean, financially, I know we can't, you can't afford it, city can't afford it. But I think we need to give it a chance, really.
And Mr. Ruder told us at the meeting two weeks ago that this is what the city was thinking of as an RFP for management of the course. We said, go for it. You're going to get one. You're going to get one from us. Nobody else thinks they can make money on this course. No one else.
Mr. Alfred, look at the change between, I mean, you've come up and you, you've thought about what needs to be done. And that's a step in the right direction right now, you know?
Yeah.
And I will tell you, I had a call today for, about the golf course. Somebody called and said, I tried to make arrangements for reservation and they told me that the golf course will be closed as of December 31st. And that's, that shouldn't, shouldn't be done.
Our lease is gone. We have no lease. We cannot do memberships. We don't have the legal.
But what should have been done is somebody should have written down the name and phone number of that individual and handed it over if you don't want to take care of it. But now, so now this family is going to rent home, to rent their course in state of Trinidad. So that's the situations we need to. You know, I, I don't want to abolish the golf association, but we have to do this the correct way. And I, I appreciate it. I really appreciate some of the suggestions that you've come with. You know, I think it's a step in the right direction. But please, and golf association members, you know, it's not an us versus you situation. I think council and police agreement, we're trying to get it. Yeah, or I'm going to hit you. No, we're, we're trying to make it better for everybody, is basically.
I hear you.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick, Mr. Alfred's right. So the, the original intent, and we told the golf association this last spring, was to go through the study, create a scope of work to put into an RFP of our expectations of the operation of the course. At that point, the golf association is more than invited to give us a proposal of how you will, you know, execute that scope of work. And before we go much further, you know, I think it's great that you all are here today. The conversation with the council, I think today we should help determine how far out we want to go ahead and extend your lease. We did send a formal amendment to extend to the end of the year. So we're covered for now. And certainly, our timeline has changed with the idea of potentially doing a feasibility study. If you want to correct what you said, the council is not voted to do that. It was presented as an idea.
Yes.
So I get that our timeline is a little bit longer than we had expected, but I think the council is going to be willing to work with you all to extend that. And we, I think there's a lot of benefits to the discussion today. So I just want to point those things out.
Okay, I'm done.
Sure.
I'm positive.
You know, I think it's a great asset. I think the basic idea of the council is, like Karen said, is to help you guys to get it back in line. And we don't want to dissolve anything. I mean, it would be impossible for us to start December 1st, I mean, January 1st, running the course because we don't have the capabilities right now. So I, I would be in favor of extending it for a year. And, but also, you know, the big question is here is why did we wait so long to make improvements? That, that's the thing. We're getting down to the point where the golf course wasn't really efficient and you could see that from what we did on the study and what you guys have done on your own. And that's a question we kind of wanted to get, maybe a kick in the butt to get stuff going up there and make it better. And I like your ideas. I think some of them are really good. And, and I think that we actually should help a little bit to get some of this stuff that's, can't do major improvements, but a lot of the stuff. And I, I really think a restaurant would really help a lot up there. And I know when David Gregel ran that, most of the people were really happy with it and did really well. So if we could get something like, and I, it's hard to find people to run a restaurant.
Yes.
I, I agree with you. It's tough.
And I've been told that it succeeded so well because he was going to spend twelve hours a day, seven days.
Yeah, that's why you say it. It was tough.
We're not going to find somebody like that anymore.
It's hard to find anybody like that anymore. But we would, we would like to, and, you know, we'd like to make improvements because that is our golf course, the city of Trinidad, and it's for the whole community, not just the golf association. That is for everybody.
Yes.
And it could be a really good tourist attraction at one time. And it's still a great course. I mean, not at one time, but it still is. And we just want to make it better. And I hope you guys understand that, that nobody's really picking on you guys on that point. We just want to make improvements. And if we can help with your joint effort, I think that would be great. And like, I like your suggestions. And if you have more suggestions for us to help, bring it to us. I think that's the problem. We didn't, we haven't communicated very well among each other. And just try to get that going and, and get started on it. And I think, I'm sure the council would be glad to extend the contract. Even if we did a, a deal, it would take us years to get that done. And we do want to make improvements. So I, I, I say I'm, I'm really happy that you guys brought that in there. And, and you guys got together and we could work with this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Alford.
Yes, thank you. And thanks, Mr. Alfred. I appreciated your comments. I, I think one of the things that I, I felt was most critical about the overview of what the consultant gave us is that he pointed out something that's been said to me about the golf course and how it's run through the association for many years. People have raised a concern that it's a public golf course being run for the benefit of a group of people, a private group of people. And I understand it must feel very threatening to have the city as the owner coming in and looking at what is, has been happening and sharing concerns and saying these things need to change, when it's something that is so literally precious to you all. So I, I agree. I don't want to alienate you all, but I do want us to all come back to the recognition that this is a public golf course that should be run not only for the benefit of the members, but also for the public and for tourists. And it hasn't been being run that way as far as we can tell. So I, that's what, I'm one of the ones who was saying it would be wonderful to see something like what happened at Monument happen for our golf course, which would ultimately benefit all of you as well because you'd have a better course, better services. We wouldn't have issues around security and the things that we have had out there. We would have possibly a restaurant that's being professionally run and beverage service that, you know, is, is something that people outside the golf club would come in and use. And, and that would provide extra. And my concern about what you've shared with us today is that I hear you all say we want a chance and we have some ideas, but I'm not hearing how you are in the position to do those things, to pay, to invest the money that it would take to do those things. You know, Monument needed someone to come in with that kind of, with, with some deep pockets to make the changes that were necessary. And we may need. pockets to make the changes that were necessary, and we may need somebody to come in with deep pockets as well to make the changes that are necessary as an investment for the future, in a course that might someday be larger, might someday more be wide, more widely visited than it is right now. So, that's, I, I hear your concern, you don't want to be, this to be taken away, but it can't continue the way it's been. The city's investing a great deal of money in one asset that benefits a small group of people. We can't do that, we have to, it has to be for the public. So, those are my, my concerns, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea for you all at some point down the road to submit a response to an RFP that we would put out, I think that would be great, but it would have to address those things more than in a, "Yeah, we're open to that, and we'd like to see that too," but how exactly would you bring in a restaurant? How exactly would you hire more people? How exactly would you put up a new billboard? All those things cost a lot of money. And so, that's what I, I'd like to know, that's what I'd like to see, how you all could view it more professionally as well, and, and address all of the concerns that were raised.
I, I don't mean to be contentious, but golf courses are always run for people who play golf, and most people don't play golf, but it's really not run just for members. We have visitors there playing every single day, and we welcome them and encourage them. We started a youth workshop, we did two of them this year to try to get kids interested in playing golf here in the community. We have more women playing, we have a women's tournament that we didn't have before. So, we are reaching out to try to reach not just old retired guys like me, to, you know, broader segment of the population, we really are, because we know that that's the secret to having a successful course, is bringing in more money, having more rounds played. We, we understand that, and the consultant was quite right about that.
He's not the only, I'm just saying, he's not the only one who's ever said that, that there has been an impression, and you all are making strides evidently to open up who is, feels welcome to come and who regularly comes, and that's exactly what needs to happen. So, an RFP would definitely need to address that too, commitments about making it more widely accessible to tourists, to visitors, to, to people who live here as well who are not members.
And frankly, the tourists are especially helpful because they pay full green fees. Members pay a small user fee each day, they pay a work fee at the beginning of the year, so we make more money on visitors, so we very much do want them. Plus, they also tend to almost always drive carts, and so that makes us extra money as well. They don't want to walk out of the course.
Well, th- those are just my concerns, that's, I, I wanted to be able to speak forthrightly about that with you all, because I think it is something that needs to be taken to heart and not just, "Yeah, we just want to keep doing this, please let us keep doing this, and we might make some changes that'll make you guys sort of happy."
No, this is a wake-up call, we, it's a very much a wake-up call that we need to do things differently, and we're quite aware of that, or else we won't be in charge for long. We're all.
Alright, thank you so much.
Ms. Gerald, thank you for being here, and, and thank you to every one of you for being here too. I say this fairly often, I mean, it indicates that you guys have a real passion for this and a desire to do the right thing. And also, you know, we have a desire to do the right thing on this side, and more often than not, I think those desires are more closely aligned than, than both sides realize, so, so this sort of dialogue is important, right? That's really come to the forefront here. Mr. Alfred, I did want to ask you a question. We, when the consultant was here, it came to light that there were several very minor maintenance issues that seemed to be being neglected in the golf course. Have those been since, or subsequently repaired?
No, no, there had, they said that OSHA requirements required a bathroom in the greenskeeper's quarters. That could be done, but that would probably be about a $10,000.
More, more minor than that, broken windows.
Or there's a broken window.
Things like that.
That's right, no. No.
Multiple broken windows, sorry.
Multiple broken windows.
Okay. Okay, and then, I'm, I'm going off the garden path here, I guess, but is, is there a comprehensive list of minor maintenance issues that you know of?
Uh, no, we could put together one very easily.
Yeah, that, I think that would be a good idea to do. Some, you know, people that bring the most recent argument, it seems like they have, in a lot of ways, they've become the most compelling argument, so. There's a few things that have come to light today that I, that I want to independently verify, and it's not a matter of trust issue, I think it's a matter of, that makes good That being said, it does not appear to me that there's any immediate means of resolution to this, so I think we would have to at least consider that extension. But I would really ask, and I can say with confidence that on our side, we'll do our level best to, you know, make that a good faith effort, and something that's beneficial both to all parties involved, and I think it's really, really important, and I can't imagine you to argue against that, but I think it's really, really important to ensure that every Trinidad citizen is really given the best possible service through it. Now, I, I take to your point, I mean, a golf course is for golfers. I'm probably never gonna golf, and it's not, I've tried it one time.
We'll get a lesson, we'll get a chance.
But, it's, it's, you know, a golf course is for golfers, but I think we should really try and get that to as many people who want to be golfers as possible. But to my point, we don't, we don't have an imminent solution, I think we need to look at the extension, but both sides need to take ownership and really try and make the best of it, and we're both incentivized, really, to make the best of it. We want to see the best course possible for all of Trinidad, and you guys want to remain in the driver's seat, so to speak. So, that's my position, I thank you for your time, and thank you for everyone else's time being here, and an extension would allow us a more full exploration of potential solutions, and I think that's always a positive thing.
And I want to commend the city council for responding to the one need that's here in the community, pickleball courts. It's the only active sport that's, that's growing. Every sport that requires you to move your body is actually, I've got fewer people participating. Thank you so much for getting all those pickleball courts going, I got lots of friends who love them. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, several things I want to bring to your attention is that, if I, I was, I'm in agreement with the strategic plan, one to five year, one to three, whatever strategic plan is that you can come up with. There's a lot of deficiencies out there, which you even recognized today, and the consultant that we brought in recognized.
Yes.
And I think those, some of those minor things like you were talking about, getting a list of those items, and list of, you know, simple things to priorities, to wannabes, and then I think what you need to do with that is bring that and be, that needs to be part of that strategic plan, and the action that will be taken and a timeframe of that action. Because some of the things, some of the things like you're talking about windows, that could be done in, you know, in the next week or so, but things like that, I think that need to, need to, need to be added into that. I'll give you this, a couple of weeks ago, I talked to a gentleman, and I, there's always been this, okay, who's on the board of directors? And I asked somebody that had been in the meeting, and I asked that person, I said, "Who are the board of directors?" He said, "I don't know." So, it's like, who are the board of directors? We don't know who they are, other than you now, that came forward and said, "I'm board of directors."
And Rick Torres is our president, he's the gentleman who squashes that.
Okay.
And we have.
Quentin McGlott.
Oh, yes. And Lori Nagaret.
Like I said, he was, he's a longtime golfer in the community and attended meetings, but he could not tell me who the board of directors are, so it's hard to hear that, you know.
Well, we have trouble getting our board, our members to come to our meetings. It's true.
I, I had suggested, actually, a while back, you know, if we do this feasibility study, if the board would participate in that and want her to do the downright no. I don't think that's a good idea, I think that, you know, cooperation, if we're gonna have a cooperation agreement, I think something needs to happen, whether you put in half or less in half. I think it would be, it would be a good idea, it would show mutual collaboration moving forward with something like this. Because we know, as you mentioned today, there's a lot of deficiencies out there, and some of them are gonna cost money, and some of them may not cost a lot of money. And one thing that I did not hear, and this was brought up with the golf carts, there are several acting members up there now that have golf carts. Are they being charged, a charge for having a golf cart there?
What's the charge?
$25 for electric cart, $275 for a gas cart.
Okay, gas per year? Okay, I, I hadn't heard that, but I'd like.
And we're willing to increase that. They would grant mildly, but we're willing to do it.
The, the one thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, and someone told me this, and I was up at the golf course at a meeting, Bob and Chief Oriolso retired, and of course you have a liquor license. And I had heard, and I didn't pay attention, that one golfer that goes up there said that by law, you're supposed to have something to sell, to eat, whether it's potato chips or corn chips, I don't really care, I understand, there's none of that. Is that true?
No, there is.
There is.
Candy bars.
No, there's chips and popcorn and snacks and candy bars.
Okay, I just want to get that clarification to make sure that, that was true.
Yeah, so we keep that liquor license, we keep that up to date and keep it healthy.
The other thing is, you mentioned that there are things that, tonight, that you're deceiving, that you mentioned that I can do, I can do, or we can do, I can do, we can do. Why haven't they been done to this point? Because you're sitting on over $8,000 in the bank account, and what is that money for?
Well, our needs are far in excess of that money, and partly that money is to get us through the bad times. Any business wants to have money that helps get you through. Right now, we're facing five months of almost no money coming in, so we've got to get through that period.
Yeah, but like I said, if you could take some of that money, a little bit of it, $10,000, and put it towards some of the minor expenditures that can, like I said, yeah, broken windows, and is that your, something, you gotta do that, something this city has to do.
We thought that was city responsibility, since our neighbors.
Things like that, I think, take a look at it and see if there's any way that you can help in some regard with some of that money, and I, I don't think that council would expect you to spend all of that money, but maybe something to show an effort.
Yes, I hear you.
One thing is that you mentioned here, and here's one, you said that the, the grounds had not been fertilized in the past four years. I don't know, what, what is the cost to fertilize grounds?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we had an appropriation for fertilizer this year, and Audrey and I just pulled up two invoices for about $7,000 each for golf course fertilizer.
Fertilizers, fertilizers this year.
Yeah, we were unable to fertilize fairways.
Okay, thank you.
So, who's answering?
We did not have laid fertilizer fairways, we did fertilize greens.
Okay. But here's the thing, and you're talking about the greens, as a matter of fact, I understand, one of the greens is not even usable, because they've taken the hole and moved it into the fairway. I'm not sure if it's one or two, I'm not really what the reason.
And I think I was skipping through my notes a little quick, one other thing we could do, the consultant suggested, that would be a great idea, is to create a green that's just for sod, that you don't play on, it's just for when you have damage to the greens, which we have this year, you have ready-made sod to fill in. It's a special kind of grass, it's, it's, it's bent grass, it's hard to grow, so we could do that as well.
You know, one thing, a suggestion, suggestion I have too is, and everybody likes to have, you know, a golf course that's green everywhere. We're not in that position, and neither are you. So, maybe a suggestion would maybe, instead of having fertilizing the entire fairway, maybe just the last maybe 50 or 100 yards to the fairway, keep those areas green up to, you know, to the greens, and leave the rest, you know, just maintain it, and that would cut down on your cost of fertilizer, and maybe down the road, maybe you can bring those back, but I think for the time being, it might be a possibility to cut back on some of the cost for fertilizing. Let's see what else I have here. The, one thing that you brought up about the, you know, the women's boxes, and I don't know, like I said, I haven't played up there in a, for a few, I haven't played golf period in a few years, but the, are there actual women's boxes that are also?
Yes, and so you have yellow tees and red tees that are the women's, and you play one set on the first nine and another set on the back nine. We have sets of tees, we've got the men's tees, and then we've got the old folks' tees. So, I play from some of the tees that women play from, because I'm over 70, and yes, women's tees are 5,400 yards, which is an appropriate distance for a golf course for women's tees. He was, I don't know where he came up with that number.
I thought you mentioned fix 400 yards, and we'll have to get that in.
And ask the women who play, they'd say they're fine.
I just want that clarification. But I guess the whole thing boils down to, it's gonna have to be a collaboration agreement, and whatever we guys can do to get with the city, but I think they, I, I'm in favor of that strategic plan, and a list of the things, and a timeframe to try to work toward achieving those plans. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a couple of things, if you don't mind. So, I just wanted to respond to three of the points that Mr. Alfred brought up. So, we're aware of the Siberian elm issue, and we've actually started a great partnership with our fire department, they have the equipment to remove those, so, she's walking out right now, but that's good, I can give them direction. So, the fire department will begin the process soon to start clearing some of the.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Want to make that happen.
Yeah, it would look so much better.
Yeah, and then we had a conversation with the council, you probably aren't aware of it, about a month and a half ago, about changing our process for how we appoint council members to represent various boards and commissions externally, and what we've decided, we're going into an election, obviously, so every January, we're gonna start a process at either the, probably the first meeting, to have all of our external boards and commissions filled, and Golf Course Association is specifically one that we want to make sure we get representative on.
And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, oh, I just wanted to suggest that when you all go through the building and do your inventory of, of issues, I'd like our building inspector to be there as well, and I'll, I can connect him with you, just so he can be part of that process and look for things that you may not notice, and make sure roofs are good, and structures are sound, and that type of things.
That would be great.
And Mr. Alfred, one thing that I think we can all agree on, and we've all heard that today, is we have an asset, and we need to make it, you know, great, you know, we have some deficiencies, and if we're going to make Trinidad a destination point which for recreational activities, this is, you know, this is part of it. So, I think that we need to work deliberately toward that direction as, as a whole.
And everyone's got their own image of what Trinidad we wanted to become, there are very different images. For me, I think the future of this town is retirement, a wonderful climate, still relatively reasonable real estate, and if you're looking to get retirees, a golf course is an enormous asset, enormous asset, and I think that's one of the, the future of our town.
So, let's work to make it better, any other questions?
I have a, I have a question, what is your timeframe for the Golf Association to get you the strategic plan? I mean, is there, is it a month, two weeks, a week, a day?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna suggest that at the November 8th council meeting, we bring a lease extension item for the council to vote on, so if you all could get us some semblance of a plan, really anytime before that meeting, preferably the Friday before, I know that's a short timeline, but it gives a couple weeks, that would be terrific. And then, the other thing, I just want to make sure everyone's perfectly clear, if you look at the scope of services that's in our current lease, it's minimal. It basically is two sentences that says Golf Course Association shall operate the golf course. So, the goal is to come up with a scope of work, the study that, that John's putting together, and it is unfair, because part of it's delays on our end, it's taking a little while to get the report, and I do have a draft report from him as of last week, and spoke with him, we agreed that we wanted to have today's discussion incorporated into the final report, so he'll revise, he couldn't be here, but he's gonna watch the meeting, revise his study and get that out to us. But I just want to make it crystal clear, that is something, we're the client, we'll review the report, and there may be some things we disagree with, there may be some approaches we don't want to do, but it's really just a tool for us to make some decisions on how to move forward, and ultimately, it's all about that scope of work for how we do the ongoing maintenance and operations of the golf course, and absolutely, if the Golf Association looks at that scope and says, "We can do that, give us a proposal, we'll evaluate it, and move forward." So, I just wanted to kind of make sure that was all.
The other thing that we could do, I just thought of this, is we have that five-year strategic plan, and I think a good thing to write in there would be to give them a one-year, to say we have a five-year plan, let's say we extend it for one year, and after, an evaluation, and moving them forward, and increase, so that you can prove to us that you are moving in that direction, we can prove to you how we're moving in that direction.
Sounds good, yeah.
Does you have another question?
I did have a discuss, a question, and it may not be most conducive to discuss here, but it seems to me that it would benefit everybody, the golf course, citizens in town, if there was a viable restaurant there. I think one of the potential hurdles. I think one of the potential hurdles for a viable restaurant is, uh, the liquor license or lack of a liquor license with the restaurant.
Yes.
Is, is there, I mean, any mean, is there any possibility that the liquor license could be, um, relinquished and then re-applied for the restaurant? I mean, how would that specifically affect?
That would, uh, as you, when he was here, he said, we got a mediocre golf course and a great bar. That liquor license brings in what portion of our income? It's.
About thirty grand of our income.
A lot. And so, yes, how many do you have?
Thirty thousand.
And so, we could relinquish that, but it would really cut into our profits. And, uh, Brett, they, they put out a request for somebody to operate a restaurant, we received no tankers. And so, we've asked for outside contractors to offer a restaurant.
But potentially, I mean, you know, obviously, we're trying to solve a problem that's decades old in the space of minutes here. But potentially, I mean, that's because, and I'm saying potentially, so that's key. Um, that's maybe because the lack of the restaurant or, I mean, liquor license was known. If that was to be able to transfer over, um, that may change the scenario, and then one thing that I would observe, that if it was a successful restaurant, I would imagine they would be paying you, um, to use the space. I, I'm not sure how that would work.
Yeah, we, I would, it's too early to have that conversation. But in general, yeah, we would want, uh, the restaurant revenue, some of that needs to go right back into the operations and maintenance, of course.
Yeah.
And all of that stuff, of course, you can't just be sure.
And Mr. Alfred, one of the things that, and, you know, one of the reasons maybe why you've not been able to attract someone to operate their restaurant, because of the history behind this. It's been, not been running to its full potential, and maybe people say, well, it, you know, this is wrong. So that could be another thing, so if you can prove they move in that right direction, you might be able to find someone to run the restaurant there. Anything else?
Thank you for, thank you for coming, huh?
Thank you, sir.
On diving three, uh, Noah's Ark update.
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, we do have the city attorney on the call, he might be a question for him about, uh, Karen recusing herself or not. Yeah, she, she was just gonna recuse herself, and I mean, she was. Anyway, go ahead.
Um, my name is Sue Fisher, I was the executive director at Noah's Ark. Thank you for allowing us time today, we're very grateful for our continued partnership with, and support with the council and the city of Trinidad. And the new shelter was built in two thousand twenty, and no one really thought about what the impact was going to be going forward from a small facility to a bigger facility. Um, in, uh, two thousand nineteen, we had eleven employees, and average of fifty animals at any given time in our care. Today, we have twenty-one employees and a hundred and fourteen animals in our care. It costs us an average of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars a day for care of our animals. Um, that's an average of forty-one hundred dollars, uh, forty-one thousand dollars per month. Since two thousand nineteen, labor costs have increased due to yearly minimum wage increases, the addition of the Colorado family leave, and the state required sick pay policies, which all had that major impact on labor costs, um, plus our additional ten employees. Food, veterinary care, vaccines, medical costs, medication costs have all increased over the same period of time. As with many companies and shelters throughout the country, uh, we've never recovered from COVID. Uh, financially, uh, financially volunteers, fundraising, and staffs have all decreased. Um, grant opportunities have decreased, inflation has caused people not to be able to donate, uh, as much as they used to in the past, and on a sad note, um, some of our long-term donors have passed away. Um, it is a state law that all dogs and cats must be spayed and neutered prior to adoption. The cost of spay, uh, and neuter in the city of Trinidad area is very expensive, so to center that same cost, uh, I have, um, contracted with vets in Colorado Springs. So we transport our animals up there. Uh, just as an example, um, here in Trinidad, a dog that is between fifty and a hundred pounds to be spayed, costs about three hundred dollars. Uh, take the dog up to Colorado Springs, it's about a hundred and seventy-two. So we're, we're saving, uh, we have, I have been working very hard since I've come on to lower the costs as much as we can.
It did spay here for the same reason, you know?
In, in Trinidad, for, for the, for a, a dog between fifty and a hundred pounds to be spayed, it's about three hundred dollars. At the, the vets in the Trinidad area, yes. Um, but we're, um, but we're taking, and I have, we, this was a contractor with dollar amount, we had with a vet here in the, in the Trinidad area. Um, so going up to Colorado Springs, it's a hundred and seventy-two. So with that, with that thought in, we do not take one dog at a time up to Colorado Springs, cause that's, wouldn't be cost efficient at all. Um, so we make sure that we're taking ten dogs or cats at a time, so that we're saving money. We have a volunteer that's taking the animals up to the Springs, so all the costs we have is about a hundred dollars for cats. So it's not, we're, I'm actually saving money in the long run by going up to the Springs. Uh, we are, um, currently, our monthly expenses is fifty-two hun, fifty-two thousand dollars a month to, to run the shelter. And this is only shelter, I'm not, our fifth store owners are not in this, present, third store, it just kinda helps support, but they can't fully support our shelter. Um, currently, we are short staff for social media, um, volunteer and foster parent coordinator, and transfer coordinators. I have eliminated the shelter manager and animal care supervisor positions that help with lowering labor costs. So as, as we try to lower our costs, we're doing our very best to get our cost down to the very minimum that we can do. Emergencies cost us an arm and a leg, and these are hard to, hard to lower. Just today, we had, that set has spent, uh, a pregnant dog, it's one of the local vets. Uh, she had a, uh, prolapsed uterus, and the cost, um, we're estimating, we're not even sure yet, is probably at least fifteen hundred dollars. Um, she had to have a C-section, and in, in the automatic spay at the same time, she had eight puppies, we're hoping they're all healthy, we won't know for another twenty-four hours. Uh, because it was a, a C-section. But this was an emergency we had today, we had no choice, or we would've lost the mom and the pups if we did not send her to emergency. Um, there was a time to send her to Colorado Springs. So, um, to the end, COVID and inflation has created basically the perfect storm for us. Um, people are giving up their pets after they've been adopted, and emptied the shelters and rescues throughout the city, the state of Colorado and the United States. People come back to work, they're, they're relinquishing their dogs. Um, we have a lot of large dogs that come into our facility, um, we can't move them out. We can't get them out to transfer, because the shit, the rescues are all full. Uh, so they're very long-term stays, and the bigger the animal, the more it costs to feed them. Um, we, when we have kittens and puppies, they lock the door pretty quickly, once they reach an age that we could legally could dump them out. Um, and unfortunately, the city of Trinidad has a lot of large breed dogs here, and, um, a lot of them end up either running loose, or people are giving them up. Which is, which is sad, wish that wasn't the case, but, um, and, but we, you know, our, our shelter is fault of big, big dogs, you know, we're, and we're at our, we're at total capacity, you know?
So what do you do with the dogs when they reach the period of time they're in the warmer hold?
We try, we try our best to get them to rescue somehow, we lower our adoption fees, that's almost nothing for the dogs after, you know.
Are you having any luck with that?
We're having some, yes. I am, we're trying to reach out to other rescues to hopefully get some, uh, get them moved out. I, I have been able to reach out to some newer rescues, so that they're just coming into play, and, um, getting their pack for license, which that's what regulates this all. Um, when I see somebody, they're on the list of pack licenses, I go and reach out to them, cause they're not full yet. So I'm hoping that they'll start coming down to us and helping us out. Um, cat, the puppies and kittens get, get dumped out pretty quickly, small breed dogs get out, get dumped pretty quickly. So basically, in summary, we have, um, our expenses have gone up, our income has gone down. Uh, we are, we're in major need of additional support from the city.
Questions?
Hi Sue, good to see you again.
I seen you.
How many inspections do you average every year, and does the ASPCA, do they do a periodic check?
We have nothing to do with ASPCA.
Okay.
So inspections that you're talking about is pack for inspections?
Right.
Um, this year.
In terms of notifications and possible violations?
Okay, so, um, we're talking about things that happened last year. Uh, we've had, under my, under my supervision, we've had two inspections, or that due for a third one. The first two, we have, uh, passed, flying colors, no, no violations, or very minor, that didn't matter, okay? Um, and I'm expecting our third one any day now. I'm, I welcome pack for, and I, I have, I do not care whether they come or not, we will pass the inspection. Um, on that note, I've been, I've had, I personally have held a pack for license for eighteen years. And in that eighteen years, I had one minor, uh, violation, and that was not having a birth date. They, I had, I had an estimated years or how old, but they wanted a birth date. That was my violation, okay? So, okay, you know, but, um, you know, so I'm not, where we stand now with the shelter, we are in excellent shape.
So are they looking more for animal misconduct, possibly?
At this point in time, yes, the minor things like birth dates, or, you know, we missed a little X on a, uh, an enrichment form. That's all minor stuff. They wanna be sure that we're not abusing animals, we're not, and not caring for them, that they're not getting the exercise at all, they're getting all of that. The, you know, so we're, we're in excellent shape.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gregor has decided not to participate in the discussion because she's been on board.
I know, I know enough about you.
Has, uh, the repair of the HVAC system and all that up there done?
I believe it is pretty well done, they actually didn't work out there today, why, I don't know, but, you know, but it's, it's pretty well done.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's completed, and then, we have talked about, at an extent, adding some stalls out there, or improvements, or to add more dogs?
There's been discussions, not, not on that level, but we did remove the cooling tower this year, um, to add additional outdoor space. Um, we're actively working at, uh, maybe developing a better trail system to connect, uh, dogs to the, the river. And then, uh, we do have a storage shelter back there that Public Works is currently using, that, uh, once we build our new Public Works, uh, shelf, or storage facility here, uh, which we have budgeted, uh, we'll move the contents over, and then, uh, hopefully go for Noah's Ark's use.
But we are looking at adding?
I, I don't think we're adding, looking at adding candles or anything at this point.
Would, uh, would that help?
Adding candles, oh, it would help, yes, but, you know, that would help us being able to heat the animals longer, and or help reduce the number of turnaways, okay? We have to turn people away, cause we don't have the space.
Yeah, that makes it.
And it breaks my heart when I have to do that.
Well, it makes it difficult, cause then they'll probably just release the dogs out to the.
Exactly, and then somewhere along the line, we get to see them anyway, but, um, it's, I, if I have, if I don't have the room, I can't help them.
I know that's kinda tough on us, cause we don't have a lot of money, but there should be some way we can look at, maybe some kind of funding to add something up there, because in the long run, we're gonna end up paying more than it's worth, and it, it does make it hard on everybody. And I know the expense is the dog food and everything, I got a little dog, so I don't cost much for.
If I had a shelter full of little dogs, we'd be in good shape, you know?
I understand.
But, but I don't, you know?
But I, and, and we understand, you know, it's, 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 it's just like you say, it's, uh, everything hits you at one time, and it.
Exactly.
It really makes it tough for everybody, including the city, but I think that somewhere along the line, we should really look at maybe extending that a little bit, maybe add a few more candles, because, uh, the building that we have is, we said we are taking down the tower.
We already did.
I mean, diet it down, I mean, and trails. Is, is there an extension that, I mean, would you need them outdoors, or how would we? Would we have to extend the building out, or can we put outdoor candles for?
Well, we really can't put outdoor candles, because we're not, uh, you know, we have bad weather, we have, you know, winter time comes, and we can't have dogs outside, you know? What we can do is do indoor outdoor candles, so that they, you know, they can get in, out of the weather.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I, I just hope we can work something out to help you out up there, because it's really tough, I, I understand that.
Ms. Odltry, any questions?
Yes, are you all pursuing any grants for the work that you're doing?
We are trying for every grant that we can find, there, the grants are not there anymore, but they, like they used to about five years ago, I mean, before COVID.
What, what occasion best report that you're giving us, is there something that Noah's Ark is, is needing from the city that it wants to ask? Cause I wasn't really sure about that.
Uh, we are needing more funds.
Okay. Okay, is there a budget that you all are talking about, or just, that you just generally want us to be aware that, that, uh, finances are very tight?
They're, they're past being tight, um, we're trying to make it to the end of the year, um, with, with payroll and all, we're looking at probably about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, alright, thank you.
First off, thank you so much for, uh, what you do, it's, um, a, a tough job, I'm sure, it's a emotionally, um, tough job. I'm positive, uh, so.
It can be, yes.
Thank you for what you and your staff does. Um, so what was, you mentioned two numbers, a forty-one thousand, and you, I believe you said that was for specifically animal care?
Well, basically, everything we do at the shelter is animal care, so.
Right.
You know, act, you know, our employees, everything, it's all for the animal.
And then you mentioned a different number, fifty-two thousand per month, what, what's the, it's, uh, eleven thousand difference?
Overhead, you know, insurance, and, you know, overhead.
Okay, so the forty-two thousand, that's, uh, food, uh, labor, wages?
That's the direct, yes, direct cost for the animals.
Okay, and then, um, sort of to follow up, um, with, uh, what, uh, Councilwoman Odltry was asking, your specific ask today is for, for this calendar year only, or?
Well, we, we need that to get through this calendar year, and then we'll have to see.
And then what's, what's specific dollar amount today, you said?
A hundred and fifty.
Okay. Um, I did have another question, what, uh, and this may be hard to answer, what, what are all the source of funds? What are all the source of funds for Noah's Ark?
Good. Obviously, the city contract. We also have adoption fees. We have license fees. We do have a lot of, we have donors and we do ask, we do do fundraisers. We have the store, yeah, the thrift stores. Thank you, thank you. And the thrift store, yes.
And that's, you think that's it? I mean, that's an extensive list.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. And unfortunately, the donors, the donor base is reducing, you know? People are struggling.
Oh, it's a, it's a hard environment.
It is.
Everybody's feeling that. I mean, you know, I have, my wife and I, we have one son and we haven't, we haven't changed over by Walmart yet. The pressure has changed. And I mean, that's, that's inevitably for every family. So you can find someplace to make money up. How, is there any way to quantify how many of your surrenders are specific for the city residents? And how many are coming from potentially county residents?
Okay. When somebody comes in and wants a surrender an animal to us, we, if they're in the county, we have to turn them away.
Okay.
You know, but does that stop them from dumping an animal?
Yeah, right.
You know, it's, you know, it's possible we still get the dog, you know, or a cat. And I'm sorry for you cat lovers. I have been in rescue for so long, for, in the dog world, that I keep forgetting about the cats. They're just as important at the shelter, you know, but it's just, it's just been a habit for me for twenty years.
I thought that that was the case with the county versus city. I just wanted to verify.
We don't, we don't have a contract at all with the county and so.
Mayor, I have no further questions.
What would you say the average number of spays and newers you do during the month? Any particular idea of the averages?
I'm sorry, I don't know those numbers. I have them, I don't have them with me.
The other thing I noticed the other day is that, you know, there was some roofing that was supposed to be done over some of the outside kennels and some of it was being done, I guess, here recently. Is that correct? It looked like there was some.
There's a piece of roofing that was.
So have they completed those?
That's the completion. That's it. That was, it was donated to us.
Okay. So what is the cost of a, of course, this, and I think Frank, I think you alluded to this, is you can't have outside kennels and pet dogs out there, especially in the cold weather and maybe even the heat of the summer. So there's got to be an indoor-outdoor. So what would really have to happen is we would have to have some kind of an extension of the building in order to accommodate something like that, which at this point would probably be infeasible. Am I correct?
Yes, I don't see how the building, I don't see how the building can be expanded itself.
Right.
Okay. I've been in construction, I've pretty much all my life and I don't see that can be done. But what can be done is we have a connects box that can be reconfigured into indoor-outdoor kennel type thing. The nice news I heard is possibly we're going to get the building there, that was the design, the design department has building, broken build has it. That right there can be a tremendous help if we can get that. I've not seen the inside, so I don't know what would be involved in getting that ready. But that would, that would extremely help.
Last thing, you know, you're talking about your budget shortfall that you have, the gap that you have. You know, the city in itself, you know, matter of fact, we're looking at a flat budget for next year from the term twenty-twenty-three is. So I'd be honest with you, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar additional rub ask, it may not be possible, just to let you know. It's going to be very, very difficult at best. So anyway, just thought I'd let you know upfront that that's something that's going to be hard for us to come up with. But I know that you guys are trying to do the best that you can with what you have. Like I said, we know it's next year. Things that spring loose, we don't know. But for the time being, like I said, we have to work on, you know, within our budget limit. And like I said, it's flat at this point for twenty-twenty-four. So anything else you need to add?
I think that's everything.
Good.
Mayor, I hope she has her hand up.
Yes, go ahead.
That was an accident. I didn't need to be there. I'm sorry.
All right, thanks.
I thought you had a solution. Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick points and follow-up. We would really love to see the county maybe participate. So you and I may want to have a conversation with some of their leadership and see if there's, you know, some creative ways we can get them involved and help us, help us fund and then also provide services to them a little bit more robustly.
Have you, have you guys gone to the county to see if they would help?
We were there two months ago or so and it was more for emergency response.
What kind of response did you get from them?
Not, not, not a major. It was, it was okay. Basically, it was about, you know, if we had, if we had an emergency and we had to evacuate, we need a place to go. And we were hoping that the county might have a spot that we could go to. And we're still not sure whether we do or not.
Well, I think they would have something up there with the therogans.
They said that therogans isn't really good enough to.
Well, I think temporarily it might be a source until, you know, the problem is rectified. So, yeah, I think you're right. I think maybe a discussion with the county to see, you know, because the only thing that that would do is, you know, it would have to allow, you would have to allow dogs and animals come in from the county.
Exactly.
I'm not sure how many turnaways you have at this point in time.
We're turning away animals almost every day because we don't have a room, you know? And that was the other thing I told, spoke with them about is we have to almost triple the size of our shelter to be able to take care of the county too.
Okay. It's raining cats and dogs out there.
Really?
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, on to item four, our co-responder program. And I think that you, Eli, you mentioned some of that earlier before we maybe we'll talk a couple of steps. What do you have?
Mr. Mayor, we have Detective Jenley here has been kind enough to partner with some friends out of Pueblo who run a co-responder program there. We had an internal meeting with them. And we wanted to bring their thoughts to council and see if that was something you all wanted to support in developing the program. So they'll explain to you what the program's all about and certainly are available to answer questions you might have.
Okay, give us your names.
Excellent. Sure. My name's Katie Ledbetter.
Katie, Katie Led?
Ledbetter. L-E-D-B-E-T-T-E-R.
Okay.
Dr. Richard Baldridge.
Would you all like to see, do you have a way for us to show some slides?
Yeah. Do you have a jump ride?
Yes.
Yeah.
So while Rick is working on the jump ride, I will give just a very brief introduction because the vast majority of us will be shared by Rick because he's our expert. The kind of orienting information for what a co-response model is, is it's an evolution of our emergency response system. And our colleague who worked with Dr. Baldridge to give our program up and running in Pueblo talks about this as we all were trained very well to utilize the nine-one-one system for emergencies. And now we understand that the nine-one-one emergency system is utilized for things that are both within and outside of the scope of those individuals, those public service individuals who are responding. So we understand the intersections of things like mental health crisis with the work that our law enforcement officers are doing. And so a co-response model really represents, excuse me, one of the necessary evolutions of our emergency service response system that brings in individuals with expertise in mental health to partner with our law enforcement individuals for the best possible outcome for all. And with that, I'll step aside. Yours won't control it because it's centered.
Just tell me next slide, but we'll pull it up here and we'll get it started for you.
Are you associated with Health Solutions?
We are from Health Solutions. Missed that part. Excuse me. I am the vice president of outpatient services and Dr. Baldridge is the director for our presto recovery services, which oversees our co-responder program in Pueblo.
Next, what we're looking at is combining behavioral health and law enforcement. Years have gone past since the first iteration of this program, I believe, in Tennessee, where trends were noticed as far as individuals were being routed to emergency rooms. Everyone knows that the worst possible scenario for getting behavioral health help is the emergency room. It's just not the right fit. So many of our law enforcement partners were seeing that that was the only option they had. And so, but fast forward from the Tennessee project, what we've seen is the addition of a behavioral health professional or professionals to the law enforcement response makes a big difference in the long-term outcome, short-term and long-term outcomes of that individual who law enforcement is getting the call that they're having a behavioral health crisis. Clinicians are embedded within the police and sheriff's department that respond with officers to behavioral calls. Pueblo, we use a primary response model, meaning that for eight to twelve hours, there is a police officer and a clinician in a car together. So that wherever one goes, the other goes. So it's that immediate response that often can be the difference between an individual in crisis getting help or an individual in crisis not getting help and going to a different part of your community to have their issues there as well. The second day response model is a clinician that is, again, with the model, but they respond separately. That is something that we are actually having to look at in the Pueblo area, but as of this day, we do not have that. We just have the primary model. However, we do have case management staff that follow up the calls. Every call that comes in through the police and clinical response is followed up on by a bachelor's level case manager staff. The keys provide safety and security for the scene and clinicians provide insight into mental health illness, help direct referrals, diffuse the situation and give individuals an alternate contact. And basically, that last one, that's where we shine the most is taking individuals who traditionally would go to the emergency room or go to, I'm sorry to say, the county line. I'm prior to law enforcement, I've seen that happen. Bob, the guy that's always causing problems, we're going to take you and give you some relocation therapy, Bob. You go to the county line. That doesn't work either oddly enough. So what we look at is how to, oh yeah, I coined that one. So what we look at is, at Health Solutions, we're blessed because we have a whole myriad of services. And this can be an introduction point into that, those services that can best help that individual at that time.
One of the things that, if I may, for one, you talked a lot about getting into graduate school for clinical services. I had no idea how much I would work with law enforcement and libraries. Like, it just isn't part of our training. But the moment you start working in a community and doing that work, you understand those critical intersections. Some of the data that's come out of the places that have done this type of work for some time, including Denver, have some really wonderful statistics, which we do have available and can share, regarding the number of individuals that prior to a program like co-response would end up with some sort of charge, would end up moving into the legal system in one way or another. And the number of individuals they've been able to divert by providing practical assistance or much-needed mental health support and access to those services in an ongoing manner is pretty remarkable, that diversion statistic.
Absolutely. Welfare checks are the third most common reason for calls for the Trinidad Police Department in the past three years. We'd like to thank our Trinidad officers and partners for providing some of these stats. Possible call types where co-responders could be helpful, suicide attempts or suicidal parties, child abuse, custody in blood, criminal mischief, some of the things that law enforcement officers, they're, and some of these calls can tie you up for hours at a time, when if we have that response with a behavioral health professional, that individual, that juvenile intoxication or fight or runaway that's a juvenile, that can be handled in a relatively shorter amount of time. In fact, one of the staff we're really proud of from the Pueblo office is we cut down about an hour of that officer's time on those calls, which that translates into money savings, by the way. We look at about sixty thousand dollars a year in savings, just individuals not being on those calls for a long period of time. Removals of parry, school resources. If you're anything like Pueblo, a lot of the referrals come from our schools, middle, elementary and high schools. And of course, the referral process and welfare checks. Welfare checks are a big use of law enforcement time, by the way. Benefits, there's many, but here's the ones we like to talk most about. Improve crisis response and reduce arrests. In fact, the arrest rate with a clinician in Pueblo, Colorado, if we look at like thirteen thousand calls on an average per month, less than one percent. Prior to or with an officer who does not have a behavioral health professional, who are doing their level best to deal with a situation that they're not trained for in the post academy, there is a, there's a dramatic increase in the amount of individuals who do end up in custody. And most, many times when they're taking these individuals into custody, they're, because of their behavioral health symptoms, that's when use of force can happen as well. And we're proud to say that when a officer is involved with a behavioral professional, that use of force is pretty much nil. So we're talking one percent over the year that end up in custody. And most of the time of that one percent, the majority of that number, there was a warrant, they had to go anyway. Or there was a serious crime that they were connected to, they had to go anyway. So we definitely see that cut down on the amount of time individuals are being diverted to jail as opposed to diverted to meaningful mental health services. Cost of savings, fewer ER visits, and we track this data monthly. Enhance police training and trust. The side effect of this is we're training officers on how to be good stewards of their community's resources on saying win to say win as far as, I know that I can handle this, but I'm going to go ahead and get someone who's better trained to handle this. And I'm going to kind of step left and let them do their thing.
Right person, right service, right time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And directing more individuals into mental health services. Health Solutions is in a great partnership position because we have the services available. And I can say that from my outpatient services in Pueblo, we do a lot of services for individuals in the Trinidad-Walsburg area via televideo. Real specific observations, increasing community engagement, effective resource utilization and collaboration. Again, that money savings, having officers doing what officers are trained to do as opposed to doing therapy on the corner at three in the morning with Bob that she only got a stop sign. I went to the police academy, they didn't train me for that. General trends, twenty to forty percent arrest reduction. Again, the arrest rate for officers in tandem with a behavioral health professional, it's less than one percent per year. Ten to fifty percent decrease in ER visits. That saves counties, states, everybody, it saves everybody money because that, of course, there are studies showing that emergency room visits are the most expensive and least effective healthcare you can place your money in. But yet, that's where we are because there's a little bit of other options to do that. Benefits for police department, reduce risk of violent confrontations during crisis calls. We've had one or two over the past four years that I've been involved with our program where an escalation happened while the clinician was there. Other than that, they do what they're, what they're trained to do. De-escalate the situation, keep officers safe, keep the community safe and get that individual moved into services. Fewer repeat crisis calls due to more effective initial interventions. If Bob goes to the service, if anyone's named Bob, I'm not talking about him. Bob's always my guy. If Bob goes into services, Bob's less likely to have that contact at three in the morning again because Bob is taking their medication and getting their, their services. Strengthen community police relations. This is a big one for me. I was unfortunate enough to be on the streets back during the Rodney Keane stuff. And I can tell you that I didn't have access to this and it probably would have made a big difference in my small community. I came from a community of like nine thousand northeast Kansas. But we're a better community of Kansas City. So we had all their problems without all their resources. So I can tell you that a program like this does improve your community relations with your, with every asset, every particular asset in your community. Community, citizens, everyone. Stricken community police relationships, enhance officer mental health, mental well-being. One of the really cool side effects that I've seen on this program is coming from a law enforcement background, law enforcement officers, they're really reluctant usually to get involved in the mental health services because therapists are seen as these really flower child folks that just, yeah. However, what we're seeing in Pueblo, that partnership is, there's trust involved, there's relationship involved. And so we're seeing officers with a decreased use of sick time, decreased use of stress-related behaviors and a decrease in early retirement due to stress and other biological issues that is usually brought on by, this is a grueling job, by the way. And so. And so, we're seeing that barrier broken down, that, okay, you guys are human, you weren't spawned from another planet, I will talk to you. And so we're seeing that.
Something our colleague likes to share that I will throw in right here is that when this started in the Pueblo Police Department, there was some understandable hesitancy, like it was sort of nose goes for who has to ride with the therapist. Now, it's a daily argument about like who gets dibs on the therapist's in their cars. So while it was one of those, the bringing of these two worlds together in such a direct manner, I think neither of us are trained for that, but as we've seen the remarkable benefits on both sides, it's really playing out in how this program is four years strong and growing in our community in particular.
Cost savings, again, 2019, 2020 budget, Pueblo CIT, reduced time on scene, the calls with the clinician on by 60 minutes. 25, 2,525 contacts that year. Within average hour, they also pay me 26,000, blah, blah, blah. Those down, that's a $66,000 saving in officer time alone. That's not even this talk about, when officers get in, usually get in physical confrontations, there's some off time, there's some hospital bills and whatnot. So get the officer off the scene so the officer can go do what the officer's trained. It just, the money spreads out across the board of what we're saving here. Co-response has been shown to free decrease of officer time on scene and increased positive experience for those law enforcement interacts. And they stick around.
And you can see this resolution, the resolution there, things that are, what these calls are resulting in, in comparison. Is that close?
I think it is. That was the last one.
Perfect, okay. So we have been in discussion with Detective Lay, we met with Mr. Rüger not too long ago, with Pueblo, with our clinic here, Heidi Martin, who's our director for our rural services here today. We are looking to work on establishing a partnership that would allow us to do the same thing here in Trinidad. And so, recently came across some grant funding that is available that would help move this process forward. To be connecting with Detective Lay, I keep pointing over there, but I think she had to run.
I moved.
Oh, you moved, okay. So I'll be connecting with her this evening, tomorrow, to get in touch with your grant writer so that we can take a look at that together.
You're speaking our language.
Ah, magical, yes, yeah, I can, dollars talk, yeah. The grant opportunity that's available is very large, and our, I met with our grant writer this morning, he feels like the possibility is quite promising, given there's a lot of energy to pour resources into rural initiatives, and co-response models have excellent data and great outcomes. And so, that is the next step on our part. As Rick mentioned, and I referenced Heidi, we do have our clinic here, our outpatient clinic, and our medication-assisted clinic. And so certainly, those resources are part of what happens when we are just, we're talking about one clinician connected with your police department, and that's that gateway bridge connection to the remainder of the services that we offer, both here locally and through our Pueblo offices, through telehealth and other types of connection. So interested in any questions we can answer for you?
Questions? Oh, thank you for your presentation today. So this is a great model, the co-response model. So I think Boulder adopted something similar when the 9/1, when the 9/11 call goes out, there's a page that goes out to a mental health specialist to assist law enforcement. In the event that person, that specialist is unavailable, is the department's equipped with courses and training so they don't make an ill-advised decision, irrational decision, either he or she?
Yeah, so you're saying the assets of a clinician is on?
Yeah, because they may not be able to get that page right away.
And you're absolutely right. To that point, we have two officers, two therapists, who are on during our daily shift, one on the overnight shift, and there are many more calls that would be appropriate for them than they can respond to. And so, in Pueblo, we have a 40-hour training that's offered twice a week, or twice a week. Goodness, thank God they're not 80 hours. Woo! Twice a year that's offered for all different types of law enforcement. It's called crisis intervention training. It's coming up actually just in the next couple of weeks. And so, there are programs that equip officers with basic mental health information so that can guide their interactions with individuals who are presenting with symptoms or signs of a mental health crisis.
So Jen, before the advent of mental health at this our police department, have they taken a training course in maybe de-escalating a situation, a violent situation?
Absolutely. So our officers are all trained on de-escalation, and right now, as it stands, your police department is responding to these calls without a clinician or a co-responder with them. This just helps make our department more robust and be able to respond to those in a more appropriate manner because we're already doing the, we're already responding to those calls. So this just, this piece of it fills that void that we've missed. We haven't had this before. We have a great, we have a great relationship with health services, Health Solutions. This makes that relationship more robust. We're gonna be able to streamline the services for those individuals that are seeking or need mental health help, which is growing every year.
So in Pueblo, do you have a success rate pro-con, against, and maybe for all this?
We probably do have some, we probably can gather some data to show you what response times. Not, we don't have it immediately available, but I'm sure we could get you some before and after statistics from them, that they most likely withhold very specifically. The reduction in call duration, or the duration that the officers are on the call, and the results of the call, is the data that we're keeping most closely. But certainly, we could seek out some additional information for you.
Knowledge.
Yeah, absolutely. And to your point, that it does represent, that's one clinician, right? And so, yes, there is a general need for a baseline understanding of mental health conditions, and just an understanding of what you're seeing and how to best interact. And I think there are things like mental health first aid, CIT training, some of the de-escalation stuff that Detective Lay mentioned that's also available.
The longer a person is in law enforcement, maybe 20, 30 years, they're probably a semi-clinician, so to speak, because they-
Just like I'm a semi-police officer, 20 years as a behavioral health professional. We do, we have, I have learned quite a lot about the legal system and vice versa. Not at all to suggest I could ever do that job, please.
Immigration, there it is.
Yeah.
I do need to correct one thing. We're going on year seven.
Woo!
Yeah, not year four, I don't know where I come from, but yeah, we're going on year seven, and we start off with two clinicians, and we're up to, we have allocated for four clinicians and two case management staff, so. And grants is a big part of keeping our world going.
And to that point, we have very largely become sustainable because we are interacting with these individuals and then able to bring them into services. And so it has, not only just strengthened our natural partnership, but it's mutually beneficial when we can pull some of that workload that really belongs to us.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's a good thing we have staff that are gonna drag us kicking and screaming into the future here because I've seen this a lot, talking about this partnership, and I think it's a win-win situation. I mean, you know, I think that probably just the sight of a uniformed officer-
Spot on.
Yeah.
In fact, Sergeant Valardy from Pueblo joined us via televideo for our last meeting with Mr. Rüger, and that was one of the things that he brought forth immediately. I can't get a term for it. It was uniform, meaning something-
I see it.
Precisely, yes. And that was something he brought forward. It was really obvious to them very quickly, it was that just the change, there was a decrease in barrier to successful interaction just by someone else, some other entity being present.
So what if our, you know, I'm all for giving this a shot, but what if our, what are our chances of getting somebody qualified, one or two people down here?
Well, so, that's a complicated question, and mental health resources professionals are in short supply like everything else. And we do have a number, our clinic is, I hesitate to say that we have no open positions at the moment for clinicians outside of, we're trying to fill a position for school, that's been difficult. This position has some real nuance, and the average clinician popping out of graduate school may not be ready to jump into a car. So it's a little bit hard to predict in terms of the pool of clinical professionals and those that would be interested in this position. Though anecdotally, I do know that Heidi has a clinician who currently works for our organization, who does not know that we are working on this project and has mentioned some interest in a co-response type position. So I think there are those who, just as we come into this from our public service mission as officers do, I think there are those who are in the middle, we just have to find them.
I can't see any downside to any of this, really, I can't. I think it's great that you're willing to bring that service to us. Thank you.
One of the things we're looking at to address that very need is, in Pueblo, we've just been lucky or blessed, or however you wanna put it, that we've been able to stay fully staffed on our clinician role with master's level clinicians, but help them get licensure and whatnot. However, the Front Range and even the Eastern Plains, they have not been as lucky as we have, so they are actually staffing these with highly qualified bachelor's level staff, and that is something we definitely look at if we can make this process work.
And it's a trend in behavioral health in general. The number one predictor of a successful outcome in treatment, generally speaking, still remains the therapeutic or the helper alliance. And it doesn't require a clinical master's degree to be able to be capable to build alliance, and we at Health Solutions already are utilizing bachelor's level behavioral health professionals because we need folks, and we're finding great outcomes from that. So that is also a possibility, appreciate Rick that you brought that up, that we may look to pivot if we go an extended period. In fact, Heidi, to this point, this school-based clinician that we've been looking to hire, it's been many months, and we're pivoting our proposal to ask for permission to consider a bachelor's level staff member for that same reason.
What kind of timeline are we talking for the time we apply to the, for the grant, to the time we initiate the program?
I don't know how to respond to that. I do remember that it might have been you that asked the same question, and she, our chief clinical officer, chief operating officer couldn't be here today, but I believe she was fairly, the timeframe she gave was 90 to 120 days, that relatively, especially because Rick and his team have forged this path with the Pueblo Police Department, so some of that groundwork is already done. So I think-
Wonderful.
I don't know what to say about the grant timeline exactly, that's a new thing, just as of yesterday that got thrown in the mix. But in terms of the logistics, we have our experience behind us, I think we could stand up pretty quickly.
Well, that sounds great for all that. I was a cop for a long time, so the biggest issue that I have to add is that, do you have, what do you do for a facility for these people that you deal with on the street? I mean, you could have someone with you, a co-responder, but what do you do with them?
Yeah.
And I think that's the biggest issue we have in Trinidad, is that we need to have a facility where we can take these people to deal with them off the street, because once you get them in the car or something, where do you take them?
Yeah.
You know, and you explain that some of mental health, you don't wanna take them to jail or the hospital, but we do need an area you can't take them to detox and stuff like that. And that's always a problem that I had when I was a cop, you take somebody that just flips out or whatever, you know they're not really a criminal, but they're having a lot of issues and could hurt someone. So I think that's, the core, I mean, your deal is really good with it, but-
And then what?
Well, beginning with that, that's the biggest issue.
That's a great, great point. In Pueblo, we do have something referred to as a crisis living room, which allows a walk-in crisis center, which then pairs up very well with the co-response model. It's not something that we have available here, though we do have crisis behavioral health professionals who come to respond in this area. So to your point, we don't have a facility, we don't have a where. And, so this would not, I would guess, and this is just a guess, I would guess that Trinidad may not see the same immediate reduction in things like emergency room visits because there could be the possibility that we're still having to find the where.
Right.
And there's, I would be willing to bet, that there's not a chance that we wouldn't see a decrease in the need for those things because some amount, some percentage would be much more successfully managed right there on scene. But your point is 100% valid. Yeah, we need a where.
But I do think it's a good program. I think it would be excellent to help with the officers and that, but I need, I think we need to work further on-
Yeah, there's much to it.
Other issues with it because-
Yeah.
You're getting one problem, but you're not solving the other. And I think that's the biggest problem, is the facilities, where having these people be taken care of.
Well, housing in general is one of the biggest indicators of how your community's gonna have success in this area. And by no end, Pueblo, housing is pretty much non-existent. If you don't have a house or residence today, the chance of you getting one tomorrow in an emergency situation is pretty slim to none. So I remember hearing earlier, one of your speakers was talking about housing, that's where it begins, honestly. If I don't have a place to lay my head, a safe, secure place to lay my head, I'm really not worried about my behavioral health stuff because I just wanna be safe.
Ms. Ogleton, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. First of all, I, yes, please, that would be great, I think. I am thinking about the training, the cross-training that, I'm wondering about whether or not it happens for both, because both parties, both the police officer and the therapist person are being thrown into a role that could be confusing, like who's in charge and who does what? Is that part of the training?
Yes, and actually, up until our most recent clinician, we have the luxury of sending our clinicians to the post-academy. They did the entire academy in Pueblo with their officer class, except they were not post-certified afterward, they did the testing and that thing. So now what we'd look at is a reduced time academy, it's an auxiliary academy through the Pueblo Police Department, and I, what I would imagine, of course, we'd have to look at the logistics of this, is any of that training we would share with, we'd share between our departments, because Health Solutions is gonna be a partner in both, and so being able to share those assets in both would probably make the most sense to me. Because you're absolutely right, having an officer, I mean, someone with a clinical degree sitting in a car, there are those nuances that they have to be worked out before you hit the street, otherwise. Under-job training, it doesn't work really well when you're dealing with folks and issues that can escalate into dangerous behavior.
That's what I was thinking about. And I had a question for Detective Lay, is she still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Detective Lay, is there a general awareness of this kind of co-responding work that's being done and a willingness to try to adopt it locally with our police officers?
So you're asking if our current patrol cadre would be positive towards a co-responder model?
Yes, yes.
I think that, well, I haven't let the staff know, I've talked to interim chief DeHannovich, he's sort of talked to some of the supervisors, they're all interested in it, but we didn't wanna say, hey, this is something we want if we weren't able to get it, like dangle a carrot and then take it away. So, so yes and no, if that answers your question.
Okay. But generally, the supervisors are positive about it, interim director DeHannovich is positive about it, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need.
My dreams are- Yeah. First off, thank you so much for waiting through such a long meeting to present this to us.
I know.
It's very, very much appreciated. I think it's something that's super meaningful. I'm gonna be honest, I don't have some of the experience that, we'll name the question, super useful, I don't feel like, but something that comes to mind, if we don't have the where that Councilman Shu spoke of, how limiting is that gonna be to the program? That'd be my first question.
Can I answer a part of that?
Please.
So we're already, so we're already addressing this as our officers, right? Now we're asking to get a co-responder in to address the immediacy of a mental health issue that we're having on the street. Just that mere connection with the folks that have additional knowledge in this background is gonna help that person on the street immediately, and get them connected with additional services down the road. I think that if we can make sure that this is successful, which I already know it's going to be, then we kinda move the blocks down a little bit and think about that next step. Because that, just the mere connection with them, right when the crisis is happening, is gonna resolve so many things for our community members that are experiencing mental health issues, that that is the, of course, the long-term goal, but right now, this would be the immediate thing that we need to move on.
And to that point, it reduces the number of people that need a where to go. Because if we can respond to somebody who is in any location as they do in Pueblo, at the- at the rescue mission, at their own home, at a community place, if we can de-escalate and resolve the issue with some targeted behavioral health support, if that's what the situation needs, we may eliminate the need for a where else are we going, right? And it's not going to take away all of those needs because the, the clear reality is that some individuals reach a place of psychiatric crisis in which they've got to be somewhere other than their home or jail. You know, we've got to find a facility for them. This is going to help reduce those things that don't need to escalate to having somewhere else to go. We can resolve that here and now to Detective Lay's point.
And I want to be very clear, I, I still think it's, uh, super positive.
Yeah.
Something that we should pursue. Um, so yeah, that sounds, that sounds really good. My other question is, um, and not every single detail, but again, the where. What, what does that look like? What, what type of facility is that? Is that something that we can modify any of our existing facilities to meet the needs of? And I, I honestly just don't know what to answer to that question.
Do you mean in terms of the where we use in Pueblo?
Yeah, like what, what is that?
The crisis living room, that's a relatively complex piece of the crisis continuum. It's a regulated type of facility, so, uh, well, our crisis continuum is a regulated type of service and that's one of those environments in which we can provide it. It's not, it would not be simple and straightforward. It took us several years to start ours up, I guess is where, is the simplest. And our, um, chief over specialty services would be the person who could give you real clear information on how that got set up. I know that it is discussed, the need and the desire. Oh, yeah, that's a photo from our original presentation of the crisis living room that's available in Pueblo. Um, so I-
I feel, I feel calm versus looking.
That's the hope, that's the hope, or one of several hopes, in fact. Um, I think that, that we've seen great impact. The other piece to know about something like a crisis living room is that you have to staff them twenty-four, seven, but they aren't needed twenty-four, seven, which means they can become one of those expensive programs to run because you need those people, they're ready to go even if no one needs them. And so they, I couldn't speak to all the nuances of setting up a crisis living room and that would be a wonderful thing for your community.
The last, the last question I have, is, is that something that could be a shared resource, I mean, to, to Pueblo? I don't know.
In terms of our crisis living room? I, I'm not sure how we would get them there, I think just because, yeah.
But, but practically, yes, logistically, you can figure it out.
Practically, literally, anyone can walk into that center and-
For sure, appreciate your time.
Yeah.
It's exciting and, uh, that's all the questions I have.
Yes, sir.
Question, question I have, I have, I have several questions here. I'm, I'm at the back end, I haven't heard anybody else and I come up with all these questions. Uh, how much of the homeless problem is creating the need?
Oh, that is a deep question. So the, I think, the thing that comes to mind immediately is the, um, estimates of those who are unhoused and also suffering from severe and persistent mental illness are extraordinarily high. And so it's hard to, and then we have to track of those individuals who are becoming involved with law enforcement, how do we parse out what may be severe and long-term mental illness versus other just criminal behavior? Um, I don't know exactly how we would answer that question, but I can tell you that they're all highly correlated. So severe chronic mental illness that really drops someone out of their ability to have a functional adult role in society overlaps with unhoused and some of these same issues that bring someone into contact with law enforcement. So I think they're quite highly correlated, but I wouldn't be able to say more than that.
Well, I, and I can say this has given birth to other programs because of, once we, um, go into the weeds a little bit, we see that, um, out of fifty contacts, forty-eight have no, um, secure housing. And so, um, they, they have the STAR program. We have a, a new program at Pueblo, uh, the SOS program. And basically, what those programs were, were, okay, there's the criminal population, there's the behavioral health needs population, and then there's this population, they just don't have a place to go. And those contacts take a little bit longer and we need more targeted, uh, resources for them. And so it's, it gives birth to other programs to look at those other individual needs.
Jennifer, Detective Lay, uh, would you, how often are your officers confronted with these issues? Are they pretty often?
Daily, multiple times a day.
Okay.
Multiple, multiple times.
Hmm. Uh, one of the things, of course, like you mentioned, is, uh, the clinicians. And in Trinidad, of course, we are short of clinicians of all types, as you're probably even short of, you're mentioning that you're even trying to find clinicians. Uh, because of the shortage of clinicians that we would have here, and I know you guys evidently must hire right along clinicians, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
We hire a clinician who's willing to be trained for that role.
Yes. And they're right along?
Mm-hmm.
Now, because of our shortage of funding or whatever, would it be possible to have like an on-call with some of the clinicians available so that if there's a situation that arises, the officer can call X, Y, or Z to say, I need help? Yep, and maybe try to find some local clinicians that might be able to step, that would be willing to step up?
We do, we do crisis on-call.
No, the other thing is, it would be, in that regard too, is, uh, when, as a clinician, uh, is there, are you, do you guys pay the clinician or does a clinician, are they, because they are, some of them may be self-employed, uh, do they accept Medicaid or, or whatever?
Sure. So this model, we have the clinician position funded through the city, which is why we've been meeting with Mr. Ruder. The landscape changed a little bit when it looked like there was, there's grant funding available to cover that. So our initial discussions were about Health Solutions providing essentially everything but the clinician. And so looking to partner with the city to pay the clinician's salary and us to then wrap our infrastructure and our program around that individual who would work for, um, for your city and work with the police department directly.
Do you, I'm not sure if you have any idea of what, you pay your clinicians by the hour?
Yeah, in fact, I could probably find for you. We did send along and I guess-
And the reason why I ask that, because I know clinicians at the state level are not paid very well.
Yeah, so we, um, I, the estimate that we sent over, which I will be able to find in a, I think, oh, look at, this is magic! Oh, my goodness! Here is this-
Good job, Jen.
Health Solutions has a, um, operational philosophy in which we, we make an effort to pay our clinicians about ten percent above the median pay. So that's where we sit and that's, that is, the, the figures that you're looking at represent that.
Because I do know this, uh, for fact, that, like I said, the, the state level clinicians, they're not paid very well.
Yeah, it's something, it, I will say, we have this commitment to pay ten percent above median and we've never not heard, uh, that folks need more.
Uh, of course, right now, you know, the thing that concerns me is that you're going after a grant and as we know, as time goes on, grants paid out.
Sure.
Uh, sustainability.
Yeah.
That's the big question here.
Right. And so in the, in our experience in Pueblo, we have those individuals who are working toward, the individuals who are doing the additional services after. So example, the bachelor's level staff members who are calling and sometimes going to the homes of individuals who have had that contact, we're then looping them into services, providing services to them. So there is some amount of sustainability for us in terms of what we are able to bill. The clinician services, some of those are billable to Medicaid and we are billing those. Our program in Pueblo is just about covering its costs without allocations and other things along those lines, just straight costs. We're just about there, covering our costs after this many years.
You know, I'm on the policy committee for the city of Trinidad for the Colorado Municipal League and one of the things that comes up year after year after year, they talk a lot about the mental health issues and that's out there and bills that come up. And, uh, this really does fit into some of the things that they are trying to do. And I would think that, uh, there's some programs that are converging here. And one of them is that opioid issue that, the money that has come in from the pharmaceuticals. The other one that is local here right now, Senate Bill Twenty-one, twelve, fifteen, that came into being two years ago and they're in their second year right now. And the city of Trinidad and the area were awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this program. And it's for, uh, the people that were in prison, they're coming out to try to get them, you know, back into the workforce, try to get them if they want to become entrepreneurs, et cetera, and also for, even way getting into the kind of schools for, um, students, talk to them about what not to do, basically. So there's some converging factors here. And, uh, one of the things that maybe, that this should be for sustainability purposes is maybe talk to, might be if there's a bill that they could put into, into this for, uh, maybe a pilot program for the city of Trinidad. Uh, I don't know if that's something that would be feasible, but I think if any of these would all converge into, because this twelve fifteen that they're working on right now, uh, the attorney general was here last week and he is very big on the opioid issues and drug addiction. And one of the things that he was talking about is the where. He was talking about the where when he was here. And the, he even talked about, uh, is there something that could be, were you there Detective Lay, at that meeting where the attorney general was here, two weeks ago?
No.
Okay. And he was, he was talking about kind of the where, uh, and, uh, that's something that maybe needs to be built into some of these programs. And he was very interested about this twelve fifteen program that I'm aware of and were aware of, uh, but he not heard a lot about it. But, uh, the thing about is they are trying to get that to extend into the future. If they, they show that the program is successful, they want to get a continued, uh, sustainability, sustainability program into the future. So I think this would be one that would really help that sustainability factor. And I think you guys already have a proven track record of where it can go. So I think there's some real good possibilities. And, you know, you talked about the where and I don't know where we would have this, but, uh, Detective Lay, is there something down in the police department that could be converted? Because I know that entire, are you guys utilizing that bottom basement area?
I, I think they're making some adjustments to, I, I mean, there's some space. I don't know if that would be ideal, but it could definitely be something that we use temporarily and, I mean, there, there's things that we can work around.
And I, I thought of that because like I said, I know that basement area is pretty huge. But anyway, something to look into and for the where, at this point in time, at least temporarily, I think it'd be interesting. But I think looking into those issues that I just mentioned, even ongoing legislation, you guys have legislators in the Pueblo area that you can maybe try to talk to them and bring them on board. So anyhow, as a matter of fact, uh, the, uh, when the AG was here, they also had the director of the Department of Corrections. And, uh, when I mentioned this twelve fifteen program, last week I got a call from his department and they're supposed to set up a meeting to talk about this a bit further. So I'll mention this as well and see if, uh, maybe this can grow.
Yeah, I do think a crisis living room would, that's, that's the pair, partner to this type of response.
Right, like I said, all these things are converging because mental health is becoming such a huge issue for all the crime issues that we have. You know, the crime issues that we have, what, and we don't really know accurately what percentage of the crimes that we have come from mental health issues. I know it's huge, but it's something.
With violent crime, it's, there are some interesting statistics that individuals with mental health conditions of chronic nature are hundreds of times more likely in fact to be the victim than the perpetrator.
Okay, any other questions for? Thank you for this.
Thank you for your time.
Good information.
Appreciate it.
Very informative.
So much.
Anything else from council that you guys want to discuss? After this? After this, you're good. Katie, before you leave, I do want this completely decided, though definitely later on after the meeting is over, if you want to stick around, if you want to ask you questions.
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions that, or?
Are we going to have a meeting next week?
It's a big question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do not have a meeting for next week. It's kind of that straight five. We might want to take it for acceptable. I want every day.
Okay, the time is now five thirty-five, we conclude the work session.